Serve at gym. Ozzy Johnson. Sorry, Ozzy Johnson. John, John Lethbridge. Owen Temple. John Turnbull. Thank you, members, for that, colleagues. Second, please. Does the council agree the minutes as a correct record?
Agree.
Thank you, members. Can we move to item three, declarations of interest? Patients that make Durham supporters and sponsors. I would also like to extend my congratulations to everyone from County Durham who were recognised in the Queen's New Year's honours, which include Darren McMon, one of the driving forces in the established Pacht House at Stanley, who was awarded an MBE for voluntary service to young people in Stanley; to Alan Gibson, a retired firefighter from Burnhole, County Durham, who dedicated much of his life to working alongside charities to raise vital funds. I'm sure many of you will know both Darren and Alan, who both thoroughly deserve their recognition. Well done to them. Thank you, members. Can we move to item five, the leaders' report? Can I invite the deputy leader of the council if he wishes to speak?
Looking for Mike from the chair?
It's coming.
Thank you, Chair. I was alert this morning on the drive in to spend with the need of the members who are here today. I haven't seen the leaders' report, so therefore I am not in a position to read it out and certainly answer questions on it. councillor Marshall has offered to substitute as an alternative leaders' report, but I regret I've had to decline his kind of a support. On this occasion, so Chair, with that, there will be no leaders' report today. I'm sure the whole council extends our best wishes to the leader and indeed all those councillors who are off work today due to Covid. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Do any members have any questions on the report really? Can I ask the council to note the report? Thank you, members. Item number six is questions from the public. One question has been received for today's meeting. I will now hand over to the deputy monitoring officer to explain the procedure.
Thank you, Chair, and good morning, members. One question has been received from Mr Anderson, who is unfortunately not able to attend today's meeting.
Can I now invite petition organizer councillor Stacey Denali to present her petition?
Many people from significant problems due to the cuts in bus services within the most frequent ways of travelling to work, to health appointments and to educational settings. And in some cases, people have lost their jobs due to not being able to get there on time. This is happening in many areas where there are high levels of disadvantaged and low-wage families. Since the cuts to services, I have received case after case from families across the county explaining their situation and pleading with me to do something to help them. One parent expressed how she had hit financial difficulty as she had no longer had a bus service that would enable her to get her children to school on time. She had to make the choice between her children being an hour late for school or having to pay the expense of a taxi every morning in order to get them there. A difficult choice when you have to choose between your children having their entitled nuclear education or being able to afford to buy food and pay bills. Another person expressed how they had to get a taxi to the next village every morning in order to be able to catch a bus to get to work on time. The expense of the taxi meant that they were left short every month and found that attending work was starting to be more expensive than the amount that they were earning. Every person should be able to easily access vital services in order to meet their basic needs and human rights. Public transport plays an important part in ensuring that communities remain connected. No community should be left behind. By cancelling these services, communities are being let down and left behind. Where is the levelling up for our rural communities? We face a climate emergency and yet those people who live in disadvantaged rural areas are forced to either use taxi services or struggle to afford to run a car, both of which increase the amount of pollution from our roads. Alongside this, we find that we face a digital switch-over. The government plans to turn off copper wiring to houses in 2025, only three years away. Add this to the situation with the lack of bus services and you will find that our rural communities will be further isolated and at greater disadvantage. Over the past two years, we have seen how important the internet is for both work and for education. We also know that many workplaces are currently offering a work-from-home option. Where will our residents of rural communities be in three years' time when they can't get to a workplace? What will happen when they are unable to access the internet to be able to work from home? What will happen when they are unable to access the benefits system as they have no means of accessing their online journal? I will tell you where this will end, with many more families in County Durham forced into poverty, many more people isolated and many more people... I signed this petition to ask that the council carry out a review of any subsidies made by the council to private bus companies to ensure that they are utilised effectively so that the most disadvantaged rural areas of County Durham have key services that support residents in accessing work, health appointments and education. It asks that, as a council, we not only carry out a review, but write to the government to petition them to fully fund bus services in order to support residents in accessing work and education. As a council, we also need to analyse the effect of the cut to bus services alongside the proposed digital switch-over for 2025 and enable the council to plan for the future to ensure no rural part of County Durham becomes further isolated and at further disadvantage. This is why I now present this petition to the chairman of the council. Thank you.
Can I thank councillor Denali for presenting her petition to the council? Can we move on to item number eight, report of the cabinet? Can I ask the deputy leader of the council to present the report, please? Chair, I must report as tabled on pages nineteen to twenty-six. Members, no questions have been submitted for the report. Can I ask the council to note the report? Thank you, members. Can we move to item nine, review of the council's hackneyed carriage and private hire licensing policy? Members, can I pass you over to our legal office to tell you about what's happened on this report?
Chair, this report has been deferred to the request of the development portfolio.
Okay, members? Item number ten, the draft revised local code of corporate governance. Can I ask the corporate director of resources to present the report?
Thank you, Chair, and good morning, members. This report provides members with a copy of the updated local code of corporate governance as approved by the audit committee on the twenty-ninth of November last year. The local code of corporate governance sets out how the council fulfils its requirements in terms of delivering good governance in local government and how it discharges statutory responsibilities and duties with regards to ensuring that the proper arrangements in place to governance of its affairs. The document and the independent policies and strategies and arrangements that it refers to are reviewed on an annual basis by our external auditors as part of the review of our annual governance statement. The updated code is attached to this report as appendix two and is structured around the key governance principles of behaving with integrity, demonstrating a strong commitment to ethical values and respecting the rule of law, acting in the public interest, defining and delivering outcomes, ensuring openness and transparency, comprehensive stakeholder engagement, managing risks and performance and ensuring we have the capacity, capability and leadership to deliver as a council. There have been no amendments to the statutory or best practice guidance that need to be addressed in the review this year. And the amendments to the code, all of the amendments that were made to the code were reviewed by the audit committee in November prior to its approval. We as a council comply with the principles of good governance, how we organise our decision-making and processes to ensure that we act in the public interest at all times, how we ensure our decision-making is underpinned by robust risk assessments and how we ensure that decision-making is transparent and accountable. It is a statutory requirement for the council to adopt one and for it to be reviewed and kept up to date on an annual basis. This report therefore helps maintain our compliance with those statutory requirements, something that our external auditors review on an annual basis. The updated code as appended to this report has been reviewed and agreed by the audit committee and on that basis, I am happy to move that we note and agree the recommendations as set out in paragraph six of the report. Thank you, Chair.
Can I have a second, please?
Thank you, Chair. Like councillor Bell, can I also thank the officers for bringing this report forward? As well as many thanks to the members of the audit committee for their review of the updated local code of corporate governance. I would encourage all members to read the local code of corporate governance, which is appended to the report. It is a good read and I'm sure members will take comfort from the arrangements in place, which clearly demonstrate our compliance with all the necessary statutory requirements. The updated code has been more than happy to second the report and ask members to agree the recommendations as set out in paragraph six. Thank you.
Does anyone wish to speak on the report? Can I ask the council to agree to receive the updated local code of corporate governance? Thank you, members. Can I move on now to item eleven, members' allowance scheme 2022 to 2023? Can I invite the corporate director of resources to present the report, please?
As said, thank you, Chair. This report sets out the findings and recommendations of the independent remuneration panel who undertake an annual review of the members' allowance scheme. The proposals in this report relate to the scheme that will apply next financial year and it's a statutory requirement for the council to have a scheme which sets out the details of the allowances and expenses paid to members in fulfilling their roles. The current schemes remain unchanged since 2014-15, when the mileage rate paid was reduced to forty-five p per mile. No other changes have been made since and the current members' allowances have remained unchanged since 2010. The scheme needs to be reviewed on an annual basis and in considering any changes, council are required to have regard to any recommendations made by the independent remuneration panel, though council are not bound by its recommendations or are free to make its own decisions, as evidenced by the fact that on three separate occasions since 2010, the independent remuneration panel made recommendations to increase the basic allowance, the most recent being last year. Members may recall that in agreeing not to increase the basic allowances in the current year, council asked the head of legal and democratic services to write to the Secretary of State to request that the arrangements for reviewing members' allowances are reviewed, with a suggestion put forward that the arrangements in England are brought in line with Wales and Scotland. And a copy of that letter and the response received is appended to the report for information. Members will see that in paragraphs thirteen to nineteen, we've set out the considerations and recommendations of the independent remuneration panel who met in November of last year and followed a majority decision resolved to recommend to council that you give consideration to an increase of two percent in the basic allowance next year for the reasons that are outlined in paragraph nineteen. One further check I referred, referenced and referred to in the annex to the scheme. The amounts referenced for each group leader have not been updated in the published scheme since the election last year and whilst the calculations and values had to remain the same, rather than updating and amending the constitution every time there's a change in groups that is proposed, the amounts paid to individual group leaders, as referenced in the annex, are removed. The scheme appended to this report does not factor in any increase in any allowances at this stage, pending council consideration of the independent remuneration panel's recommendations. Should council be minded to support the independent remuneration panel's recommendations, then the allowances quoted will be updated before the scheme is published. Just for members' reference, the two percent uplift in the basic allowance would equate to two hundred and sixteen pound annual increase for all members and incur costs of around... Recommendation, Chair, set out in paragraph five to the report.
Thank you.
...which take into account a range of factors as detailed by the corporate director. Before dealing with the substantive issue of the IRP's recommendations, I wish to move the recommendation on amendments to the annex in terms of payments to group leaders as outlined in paragraph five-two of the report on page four hundred and thirty-two.
Is there a second? Does anyone wish to speak on this report?
Chair, it's more of a point of order, really. I'm just checking at this stage, which is talking about that particular annex within the report and remove that. I'm just seeking some clarity, really, from the officer team around the rationale and logic from not publishing in this report the allowances to the individual group leaders. What would the implications of that be for council going forward about those not being included in this public document?
Thanks for the question, councillor Marshall. We're not proposing to remove the how much is paid to the group leaders. It's just the list in the annex of the individual group structures that exist within the council because we had a situation where the scheme as published, the changes in the groups following the election meant we'd have to re-bring the scheme back to council before we amended it. So it's not publishing that group leaders receive those payments in line with those calculations. It's just listing the individual group structures within the annex of the scheme now from time to time. That's the proposal.
You don't... Just one second.
Chair, I just wanted to check forward. So does that mean that the constitution will be updated to reflect future workers in the council?
Yes.
Councillor Quinn?
Background, my wife is a key worker who, like many of the residents in my ward, who worked tirelessly over the pandemic. This is like Ferry Hill that have kept this country going throughout these tough times. I for one will be doing what I think is right and not voting in favour of the pay rise to the taxpayer of County Durham. I believe the money is better spent within the community and not directly into someone's pocket. We in the joint administration believe in saving costs in the most efficient way possible with the least amount of consequences to the public. I never got into this job for the money. For me, the rewarding part of this role is tackling the issues within the community, listening to the people of Ferry Hill and, most importantly, representing the people that put me in a position...
Can I carry on?
Sorry, Chair, a point of order. I think you've got to take my point of order before you bring your speaker back in.
One, member? One second. Sorry, Chair. One moment.
Thank you, Chair. I thought through a session that what we went through was debating the first recommendation that councillor Bell moved and then the second and then this debate on the actual allowances and how they would be set would be part of the second one. That's my point of order, Chair.
Chair, if I could through you, I think as councillor Marshall quite rightly says, he did raise that and councillor Bell did answer that. But for the benefit of all members in the room, the procedure is going to be as councillor Marshall has outlined. So we'll deal with the technical amendment first and then there will be a debate on the substantive item of the IRP's recommendations after this recommendation has been agreed or disagreed, as it may be. Want to speak on this part of the recommendation or whether they're happy to go to a vote on this part of the recommendation and save their right to speak until the substantive motion?
Does anyone, any member wants to speak on what James has just said? On this part of it?
Thank you, Chair. First, it tends to be wanting to... Just specifically relating to the annex. I'm sure everybody in this room believes in transparency and I think there's a concern here that this may hinder transparency in terms of members' allowance scheme. And just picking up from the officer's comments there, the reasons have changed to the next council meeting, just to make that up to you. I'm concerned that we may be using a hammer here to crack an egg, shall we say. Thanks.
I don't have that information to hand to councillor Tinsley, but I can provide that after the meeting or as a full script to the minutes if members would like that information.
Councillor Joplin? No, okay, right, fine. We'll go to the vote now. Pass on with James, who will tell you the process.
So again, just to clarify, this is only on the technical amendment to the annex. It'll be one to vote for the amendment, the recommendation, sorry, two to vote against the recommendation and three to abstain. And the voting's on.
Chair. Chair, I ask just for clarity because the graphic on the screen there tells us absolutely nothing. Is this for the change in group leaders' choices, for the substantive portion to achieve an actual increase in the this and the allowance? I'm not clear.
Chair, through you, just for the benefit of all members, this is just the change in the table in the annex. This is not about any percentage uplift or otherwise to the basic allowance.
Thank you.
That we are once faced by our residents and other issues faced by the council are such issues. That is why the joint administration, as agreed at the constitution, working party, is not making a recommendation leaving it to the judgement of every member. Issues like this should not be decided by group leaders and it is time that members consider these issues for themselves as a free vote. I recognise that some people struggle with that concept. Some groups have a very top-down approach and whipping systems and this makes it a very difficult concept for them to grasp. Perhaps that is why councillor Marshall has misreferenced this report and this vote in things like his Facebook posting last night stating coalition of chaos plans, councillor pay rise. This is a report of an independent remuneration panel and it just very clearly states that. I do hope that members generally have read this report in detail. I see no real need to have a productive, proactive debate on this matter and would suggest that we simply consider the reasoned recommendations put forward by the independent remuneration panel and move to a free vote on this issue. With that, Chair, I would like to move that we have a vote on whether to accept the IRP recommendations in terms of an increase in members' basic allowances of two percent next year. Thank you, Chair.
Do I have a second for this, please? Second, do anyone wish to speak? Councillor Marshall?
Thanks, Chair. Could I pass on my thanks to independent panel members who services my time on this UV council and came back with recommendations every year? I think sort of that said, and I agree towards if ever there was a conflict of interest, I think that is, from my point of view, you know, and from the labour group's point of view, it's absolutely scandalous that we can be sitting here looking at anything like a two percent increase in allowances. You know, the labour group and this council have shown strong leadership year on year since they were running this council to make sure we led from the front and would kick back on any increase in members' allowances. And I think that's important. This isn't a group decision that we make in the labour group where members are with. In fact, we are unanimous in our views as individuals, as part of our group. It is unacceptable. You know, we've had a public sector pay freeze. We've had residents across County Durham where we've faced spending cuts. In our council, we've caught over a billion pounds. We've had job losses, you know, it's been a horrendous ten years for residents who now find themselves facing a costly crisis and many on financial cliff edge as we approach the things that we're going to discuss in the motion shortly. So I think it's scandalous that anybody isn't putting their... or saying outright that we shouldn't be accepting, that we should be rejecting the views as a panel. We shouldn't be having a pay increase. I think it's in the best interest of all residents in the county that as politicians we lead from the front and we try and set an example unlike some of the politicians nationally, to try and build some trust and confidence in politicians across the board. to try and build some trust and confidence in politicians across the board. So the Labour Group are being kicking this out. We don't want to see a pay increase for councils, we think it's unfair, unjust, it goes against the grain of the staff and the troubles that our community's going to be facing. And we should be concentrating on looking at how we minimise increases in council tax and provide the best quality support and services with the difficulties that they're all facing as we move forward. Thank you, Chair. So, sorry, Chair, I'd like before we move that we do not accept the recommendations of the panel, before we accept that we accept no pay increase at all from members this year.
Thank you. Second for that, please?
I'll take that, Chair.
Okay. Councillor Wilkes?
Second, I request a day of pause.
Chair, just as councillor Marshall has moved an amendment, and that's been seconded by councillor Crute, the debate will now move on to an amendment as to whether we should rip, the council should adopt a 0% increase on the members' allowance.
Councillor Wilson?
Colleagues, I had no intention of speaking on this item, I was simply just going to vote against the recommendations. And then I was shown the online comments by the leader of the Labour Group last night. I genuinely think it's unacceptable for members of this council to insult independent panel members by calling their reports scandalous, and to lie to the public about how this report is determined. And whilst he continues to behave in this manner, councillor Marshall, in my view, does a disservice to his party's residents, this council and himself. He's even undermined his own deputy, who agreed to accept this report being tabled and to a free vote on it, as has happened for the last 12 years. Colleagues, it's this kind of behaviour which damages the public perception of local politics and has no place in our county. The joint administration stands above this immature behaviour, as I'm absolutely certain that the vast majority of Labour members are also be voting against this pay rise, Chair.
I'm sure everyone here has seen a massive increase of need, and I just think it's quite tenuous for, I've been on this council for, well, not 12 years, I've been on a few years, from what I can remember, Labour have always voted down pay increases such as this, because we're still living through a Tory and Lib Dem imposed austerity against local government at the North East. And I'm going to bear this free vote in mind as we go forward, thinking of all of the items we've voted on in the past few months as a council. I don't believe that members of the coalition were given a free vote on any of those, and thinking ahead to some of the more difficult decisions that our council's going to have to make around the budget, around austerity, I'm going to bear in mind this free vote, because if this is an issue of conscience for members of the Tory group, then I wonder what those are going to be. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Hawles?
This actually puts a sour taste in my mouth, and I think it will also do the same with the residents. Throughout the last few years, we've seen people, families within our community struggling, not only for food, what I see on the television this morning, even for a bed to lie on, and yet we sit behind discussing this, I find very distasteful. I will not be supporting this report, and I think it's absolutely disgraceful that we discuss it this morning.
Thank you, Chair. Second time really, I hope. I come from a work class background. My wife is a key worker who, like many of the residents in my ward, have worked tirelessly over the pandemic. It's places like Ferry Hill that have kept this country going throughout these tough times. I for one will be doing what I think is right, and not voting in favour of a pay rise. Thirty-three thousand five hundred and sixteen pounds is a lot of money where I come from, and that is the minimum cost of this pay rise per year to the taxpayer of County Durham. I believe this money is better well spent within the community and not directly into the pocket, into someone's pocket. We in the joint administration believe in saving costs in the most efficient way possible with the least consequence to the public. I never got into this job for the money. For me, the rewarding part of this role is tackling issues within the community, listening to the people of Ferry Hill, and most importantly, representing the people that put me into this position. For me, that's worth more than any pay rise. Therefore, I will be voting against the pay rise, and I hope my fellow councillors will do the same. Thank you, Chair.
Councillor Howie?
Being a single mum of four children on my own, and we're dead, I have struggled this last few years. I've taken on this job for the love of wanting to help people, not for the money, block like we've read about in the papers just recently with other parties. We do look at recommendations that are sent to us from independent parties, we do go through them, and I believe as a democracy, we have every right to have a vote as a person and not be told how to vote. That's what we do in a democratic world. So I do it for the love of wanting to help people, not for the money, and I will be voting against any pay rise.
To be perfectly honest, I understand the difficulty that the independent body are put under, the request to do this. However, I do think it is not correct to, for us to accept any pay rise this year. There are people over the last two years who've been needing to use food banks, who've been needing, who've been left in perilous employment situations. I don't know, yeah, many people have seen this as well, but it seems there are issues around housing are flying up at the minute as well. The fact of the matter that we take any of this would be, I think, a massive disservice to the county, and I won't, I won't be voting there. To get a pay rise, I'll be voting with the amendment.
Councillor McDonald?
Thank you, Chair. I appreciate we have a process when it comes to motions for the council. However, the purpose of an amendment is surely to change the outcome of the substantive motion. The amendment's been proposed by councillor Marshall, will actually have the same outcome. People either want the pay rise or they don't want the pay rise. And for further information, I won't be voting for it either. Thank you.
Councillor Joblin?
Thank you, Chair. I'd like to ask that we go
No, just one second.
I'd like to ask that we go straight to the vote. There is no acrimony over this. There is full agreement in this chamber that we are not going to vote for this pay rise. So I don't think we need an hour political speech from the opposition just so they can get their views on YouTube and spread their poison.
Second for that, please?
Chair, point of order? Chair, from the constitutional point of view, I understand that amendments can only be put forward if they're put in writing. And I know there's a lot of confusion going around the room at the minute about what we're voting on and how it's going. Can I just ask and request the Chair if it would be possible, if we can just have a single vote on whether we're for the 2% increase, or whether we're against any kind of increase 0%? So in but removing the amendment and seeking clarity. As stated, I don't believe we're following the constitution here, as no amendment has been put to you in writing.
Chair, there's no absolute requirement to have an amendment put in writing. You may require that amendment to be put in writing, but it is not an absolute requirement. The purpose of the amendment is, does not negate the amendment put by councillor Bell. Council must adopt a members' remuneration scheme. The motion put forward by councillor Bell was for a 2% rise in the basic allowance as recommended by the IRP. To vote against that would not therefore adopt a remuneration scheme, it would just simply reject a 2% pay rise. Therefore, the amendment put forward by councillor Marshall is to adopt the members' remuneration scheme with no rise. So there is a very technical difference, but it is a very important distinction.
I must correct the deputy monitoring officer in what he said there. I did not move a recommendation to accept the IRP panel's recommendation. I conspicuously said that I made no recommendation, that we moved to a free vote. Had members actually just listened to that, that would have wound up in a vote of one, four, two, against, or three abstaining, and would have been voting by now. But I must correct that for the minutes, I conspicuously did not recommend that we accept the 2% recommendation of the IRP. I recommended that we have a free vote. Thank you, Chair.
I think we've discussed this quite enough, so before we have a vote, councillor Bell, you have the right to speak.
My motion, Chair.
One second.
It's the mover of the original motion, who has the right of reply on it before any amendment. Please vote it on.
I'm waiting for you. No.
My observation might be helpful if the Mike read reports diligently. They heard me say, I make no recommendation. The amendment has now been moved, so it is, I'm sure the monitoring officer will confirm this. You vote for the amendment to reject the recommended increase, you vote against the amendment to accept the recommended increase, or you abstain. I presume those are the choices, and would just ask the monitoring officer to confirm those choices. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. We'll now go to the vote, but I'll pass over to the officer to explain exactly how the voting will carry out.
Thank you, Chair, and I will obviously be willing to accept any clarifications, because I appreciate this is a confusing matter before, before members this morning. But we are now taking on a vote on the amendment as proposed by councillor Marshall, which is to adopt the members' remuneration scheme with a 0% increase in the basic allowance. If you wish to adopt that particular amendment, vote one. Wish to vote against that amendment, vote two, and press three to abstain. Councillor?
Chair, with all due respect, I ask for a named vote, and the requisite number of Labour councillors support of that, so could you have the name voted?
Chair, quite rightly, there is members on both sides of the floor which requested the named vote, so this will be a named vote.
What will be a named vote?
The names of each member and the way that each member voted will appear in the minutes. Thank you.
I'm not going to speak now, I've seen the vote, you unanimously going to reject it, and so the people of Ferry Hill and other constituents and other towns in County Durham will be happy about that. Thank you.
Councillor Mulholland, do you still want to speak or not? Councillor?
No, no, again, press that just before the vote, and please to see if the councillor's done the right thing.
Okay. Councillor Bell? Okay. There's no one else on the queue, is there, who hasn't been asked to vote? Okay. Do you have the right to reply? Councillor Marshall?
Chair, just very briefly, because we've got two really important motions to discuss next, I just wanted to thank all members for the support of our amendment, and, you know, hope for the workforce and the people in the future. Thank you.
I'll bring the deputy monitoring officer to explain the next part of the voting.
Thank you, Chair. Now that the amendment has been adopted, it becomes a substantive motion, we do unfortunately need to have to have another vote on that. So it's one, if you wish to adopt the members' remuneration scheme with a 0% increase in the basic allowance, two, if you wish to vote against that, and three, if you wish to abstain.
Remain here again, members. We will remain here again.
Thank you, Chair. The vote is now open. Just a reminder, one, to adopt the members' remuneration scheme with a 0% increase in the basic allowance, two, to vote against that motion, and three, to abstain.
Chair, just very briefly, because we've got two really important motions to discuss next. I just wanted to thank all members for the support of our amendment. And, you know, hope for the workplace as people in the future. Thank you.
I'll bring the deputy monitoring officer to explain the next part of the voting.
Thank you, Chair. Now that the amendment has been adopted, it becomes a substantive motion. We do unfortunately need to have to have another vote on that. So it's one, if you wish to adopt the members' remuneration scheme with a 0% increase in the basic allowance. Two, if you wish to vote against that. And three, if you wish to abstain.
The vote is now open. Remain here again, members. We will remain here again.
Thank you, Chair. The vote is now open. Just a reminder. One, to adopt the members' remuneration scheme with a 0% increase in the basic allowance. Two, to vote against that motion. Three, to abstain.
Vote to close now, members. Members, four, one hundred and three, against zero. Abstentions, three. The motion is carried. Can I move to item twelve, members? Request for dispensation under section eighty-five, one of the Local Government Act nineteen seventy-two. Can I ask the Corporate Director of Resources to present the report, please?
Thank you, Chair. I'll be brief with this one. The current legislation does not allow hybrid or virtual meetings to take place and requires members to attend formal meetings in person to conduct council. Then, subject to certain exemptions, they cease to become a member. This report asks members to agree an exemption to those rules where the failure to attend is COVID-related. Recognising that some members' ability to attend meetings in person may be inhibited due to medical or self-isolation requirements. It's proposed that this dispensation is put in place October thirty-first of December this year. Chair said in a brief, the recommendations are set out in paragraph three.
Thank you. Can I have a move-up, please?
Thank you, Chair. Move the report. The principal advantage of doing this is that any member whose absence is COVID-related will automatically be able to be granted a dispensation as to having to come to council specially with named members to give them dispensation. So it's a matter of convenience, and given the numbers of members absent today because of COVID-related issues, it seems definitely sensible. So with that, Chair, move the reporters' table.
Thank you. Can I have a second, please?
Well, I haven't got the legal powers to hold hybrid meetings. And as Richard has already outlined, there are consequently suffering the same. And I don't think they should be removed as a consequence of them being ill. So I fully endorse this and second it, Chair.
Okay. Does anyone wish to speak on the report?
Yes, Chair. While I accept the gist of what's been said here and I will not only support giving members a dispensation should they fall foul of COVID and be laid low, so to speak, at the six-month period. But I'm a bit disappointed that we're not including other illnesses. What about somebody who actually has cancer? You know, what about somebody who has a mental health problem? Why, why are we just focusing on COVID? Surely it's done on a case-by-case basis. Therefore, you do not need to specifically name one illness unless you're going to name all the illnesses. So can I have clarification? Why COVID? What happens if, God forbid, I get cancer and I can't come to meetings?
Chair?
Yes, Chair.
Chair, the legislation does provide for those circumstances already on a case-by-case basis. The proposal being put to council is because of the pandemic and the generic nature of the illness that can affect many, many members. But we do already exercise those dispensations in circumstances such as you've just outlined there. So it wouldn't preclude that. This is just a general policy for the council to adopt, given the pandemic nature of COVID.
Anyone else wish to speak? If not, can I ask the council to agree that an automatic dispensation under section eighty-five, one of the Local Government Act nineteen seventy-two is given to all councillors up to and including the thirty-first of December twenty twenty-two if absences are COVID-related? Great, members. Thank you. Can we move to item thirteen? Overview and scrutiny's six monthly report. Can I invite the Chair of Overview and Scrutiny to present the report, please?
Thank you, Chair. I'm very pleased to present to the council the first overview and scrutiny update, which sets out some of the activity we have undertaken in the past six months. It has been a very busy period. I was honoured to be appointed Chair of the Corporate Overview and Scrutiny Management Board in May last year with the support of my Vice-Chair, councillor Chris Lings. We have welcomed new scrutiny members and new Chairs and Vice-Chairs of our committees in the past six months. We are taking a refreshed approach to scrutiny work. By encouraging inclusiveness and transparency, we are developing our input into policy development and working hard to ensure scrutiny is effective. We continue to implement the scrutiny process in accordance with the four principles of effective scrutiny: to provide a constructive, critical friend challenge; to amplify the voices and concerns of the public; to be led by independent-minded people who take responsibility for their role; to drive improvement in public services. Much of our work has featured the impact of the COVID-nineteen pandemic on service delivery and most recently, understanding service restoration and recovery. I would like to give you some brief examples of the work we've covered so far. My own committee, the Corporate Overview and Scrutiny Management Board, has contributed to Cabinet's review on options for the DLI museum, art gallery building and surrounding grounds. We held a lively meeting and the outcomes have formed part of the evidence for the review by Cabinet. The Board have contributed to the budget process through consideration and scrutiny of the MTFP. In these times of financial challenges, uncertainty for local government funding and increasing budgetary pressures, this is significant and important role for scrutiny. Children and young people chaired by councillor Chris Hoad with councillor James Coslett scrutinised the development of a new send strategy, considered the key findings following the focused Ofsted inspection in two thousand and twenty-one and received an update on child and adolescent mental health services. Economy and Enterprise chaired by councillor Bill Moist with councillor Andrew Jackson has received a presentation from Visit County Durham looking at the visitor economy. The committee has been updated on new master plans to support potential levelling up fund bids and examined the approach to developing key strategic employment sites in the county. The Environment and Sustainable Communities Committee chaired by councillor Beth Colt and councillor Jonathan Elmer has considered the latest climate emergency response plan and continues to monitor the single-use plastics action plan. The committee has begun work on looking at the evidence base to determine if there is a need to declare an ecological emergency in the county to feed into future decisions Cabinet will make. Adults and wellbeing in health led by Patricia Joplin with councillor Rochelle Charlton-Lynn has considered proposals to review services provided at Sholley Bridge Community Hospital, examined plans across the health and social care system for both surge and cold weather activity on admissions in two thousand and twenty-one, and also reviewed progress against recommendations made by previous scrutiny review in the GP services in County Durham. Secret and Stronger Communities chaired by Joyce Charlton and councillor Brian Avery has considered presentations on arson and deliberate fire setting, received an overview of the Domestic Abuse Act of two thousand and twenty-one and have taken part in focused briefing sessions on substance abuse and antisocial behaviour. It's also worth noting that Brian is an absolute massive loss to our team of Chairs and Vice-Chairs. They demonstrated a real passion for raising issues to concern involved in so far, which I now present to you. I'd like to add my thanks to the officers that support our work, for the Chairs and Vice-Chairs leading on the work programmes they formulate. Most importantly, I want to thank all of the members that take part in these committees, providing constructive feedback in turn and holding the executive to account. We've had some really good debates and discussions and long may it continue. I ask members to accept this report. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions on the report? Can I ask the council to note the six monthly update? Motions, councillor Crute, could you? Go to the deputy monitoring officer to explain the procedure. Sorry about that.
Thank you, Chair. As is usual, movers of motions have five minutes to speak and everybody else will be entitled to three minutes. The mover of the motion shall be entitled to a three-minute right of reply at the end of the debate and shall be the only person entitled to speak more than once. If any amendments are moved and seconded, council will debate whether or not to adopt that amendment. In any debate on an amendment, everyone is entitled to speak other than the mover of the original amendment, who shall be afforded a right of reply at the end of the debate. If, following a vote, the amendment is adopted, it becomes the substantive motion. If the amendment falls, the debate returns to the original motion that was set out in the agenda. Thank you, Chair.
Then the second mo- Thank you, Chairman. In addition, universal credit payments will continue to struggle to make ends meet as the government's decision last year to remove the twenty pound a week population is set the sword to its highest level in almost thirty years. As a result, Chairman, the Resolution Foundation has estimated a down to a year for each family. One thousand is crisis on the people of County Durham. Reinstate the twenty pound uplift to universal credit payments dating an already entrapped few poverty and environmentally harmful fossil fuels by putting more funding into clean energy and home insulation projects. Chairman, this is a crisis made in Downing Street and it's typified by harsh policy decisions such as taking away twenty pound a week from struggling families on universal credit while at the same time increasing taxes via way that's breaking an election promise made two years of impact of this crisis on working people and hard-pressed families. So, Chairman, we've offered a way out. The rest has looked at members this morning to support this motion. Callum, if you want, try to focus its energies on delivering a decent standard of living for our residents and at the same time alleviate the financial burden, this impending cost of living crisis. Chairman, I move the motion as printed on today's papers and on the screens at the front of the hall. And I urge every member in the room this morning to support the motion in its original form. Thank you, Chair. Thank you. This will require a seconded?
Seconded, Chair.
Seconded?
But I move a motion without prejudice, which takes the vote like you are on the same page.
Sorry, councillor Serdys, one second.
Chair, it's not possible for a second that you also move a closure motion at the same time. A closure motion can only be moved at the end of a speech by another member.
Councillor Serdys, you want to say something?
I'm going to second the motion, but I must second the motion as somebody who'd already done it.
It's already been approved by the member in the back.
Right, sorry, you wasn't using the mic. Can I just say thank you very much for the mic use, thank you.
Okay, with that. Councillor Sexton? Can you hear me?
Yeah. Chair, can I? At that point, if that vote is carried, can motion. So it will be one, two, and...
Okay, can we have a second to find Paul Sexton's motion? We've got two here. That's fine. We've got one here. Thank you for that, councillor Wood.
Members, the vote is open. One, to vote to end the debate. Two, to vote to continue the debate. Three, to abstain. Thank you.
Close, members. Chairman, in the spirit of the closure motion, I'll have you cross the board. Thank you. I'll pass over again to the deputy monitoring officer to explain the voting of this.
Two, to vote against the motion and three to abstain. Thank you. And all done. Against, three to abstain, but I'll inform members when it's re-ordered. The vote is re-armed, members.
The vote is closed now, members. Members, vote is as follows: four hundred and three against zero, four abstentions. The motion is carried. Can I now move on to councillor Gunn? Councillor Gunn, can you move your motion please?
Thank you Chair. I think what we've just seen is a first for this council in nine months. So in the interest of consistency, I would like to think that this continues with this motion. Can I just say as a round chair that this motion was sent in before the Prime Minister Boris Johnson. He lifted Plan B, the restrictions around Plan B, including the wearing of face masks for secondary pupils. But this actually makes this motion even more important because it's a motion asking the Secretary of State for Education to keep our children and school staff safe and to keep schools open. I know that we're all very hopeful that the Omicron infection rate spread is in decline. But whilst hope and optimism is good, it's not an assurance. And we don't know whether another variant will arrive, although I've heard that there already is one. And if it does arrive, how it might impact on spread and on health. So in the meantime Chair, we should all be doing everything we can to protect and make safety a priority for our schools. And I know that only 7,000 air filters have been made available for what's been estimated as 300,000 classrooms in England. In our case, just doing a maths around that, that would likely be just air filters for six classrooms in 266 schools, six classrooms in 266 schools. Now I'm sure you all know of classrooms in your area that would benefit from one of these air filters. But you're not going to get one. And some of our real challenges, and I cannot thank them enough. I'm sure we would all agree that children need to be in school. We know all the arguments for that. But this shouldn't just be a statement Chair, they're and these are, and it's it's not an overstatement to say that getting air quality and ventilation right in our schools could be the key to improving the future health and wellbeing of our children. I move Chair.
Thank you. Motion need a seconded?
Thank you Chair. Veronica Andrews, councillor for Vernonfield, Dinton, in our schools. For many reasons, mainly helping schools to manage transmission and reducing disruption to face-to-face learning because of education, it will be an asset from the social aspects which being in school provides. This has a knock-on impact on mental well to affect the transmission through our communities. It would future-proof schools if it's believed coronavirus is a realm for the long term and for any potential variants in the future.
Anyone?
In bringing it, I think it's probably a little bit dated, given the Guardian report stated several weeks ago, back to early December, and obviously, as you've acknowledged, things have changed. Plan B restrictions being lifted today and COVID rates continues to fall in the county. I principally want to make some points just in terms of the to reduce ventilation. In other words, the primary mechanism for dealing with air quality where you can is to open windows, not install them in every classroom. In terms of how many schools in County Durham have been affected by this, obviously we're not The major protection against vaccination is about, against COVID-19, is vaccination. And we have amended for healthy five to 11-year-olds. We do have a feel from talking to teachers that many would appreciate being given priority status alongside of the frontline workers when it comes to top-up priority vaccinations and any future vaccinations. And we believe that is a very important thing that the government can and should be doing. Albeit that is a decision for the Committee on Vaccination, not a political decision by the Secretary of State. In terms of face masks, the guidance for people who may be more vulnerable to COVID-19 as a result of the underlying health conditions and for people who are pregnant does not specify that medical-made masks should be used. Although depending on the individual risk assessment as performed by the school, this may be a mitigation measure which is appropriate for some people. It's on an individual risk assessment basis that enhanced protection is indicated. Then the school can order a supply of these via the PPE cell online portal and these supplies are free. Clearly, it never was the plan to fit air filtration devices to every classroom in England and it would not be sensible to do so. A sensible approach is to fit air filtration devices to windowless classrooms, especially those where vulnerable children are taught. Compulsory mask-wearing in secondary schools ended last week. Yet given the relative high rate of COVID infections in County Durham, some heads wish to continue. Opinions differ about the value of mask-wearing by people
One minute, member.
versus the adverse effect on education, as teachers cannot see whether pupils can understand a lot. And we need to resolve this question of guidelines and mask-wearings with proper government guidelines if this is possible. We value highly teachers and their work and that's why we would like to see them vaccinated earlier than the general population in future, given that children and young people are always going to be a major source of future infections. Chair, I move the amendment. Thank you.
Thank you. At this point, can I bring in the deputy monitoring officer?
Thank you Chair. The 30-minute time limit for motions under the Constitution has now expired. So unless a motion without notice to extend that time limit is moved at this point, we will move to the votes without any further debate.
Chair, I thought we might have had time to get through the business. You know, that unavoidable glitch in the IT equipment got in the way. With that in mind, could I request that we move to suspend the relevant item in the Constitution to allow for more time to discuss this motion please?
Seconded for that? I have one. Members, can that be agreed by?
Agreed.
Agreed. Seconded for councillor Bell's amendment?
I'd like to second what the motion is that announced the bell is brought before us this morning.
Councillor Quinn?
I was notified as a foundation governor about one of the schools that I'm a governor at. They've got 44 cases of children off, on school absences. 26 of those are confirmed cases of COVID. There's six members of staff off. And the directive that they've had from county is to say, as long as there is a schoolteacher in front of a class, the school must remain open. That is more than a quarter of the children off from that school. And six members of staff and people are, you know, supported, helped and given the best possibility in life. These are the children of our future. Thank you Chair.
Councillor's amendment is not about children's skills in County Durham. Is it really right that we have a situation that's acceptable where we have classrooms? Where it's not possible to take quick fixes such as opening windows and doors? Is that real? 2022, we have a situation like that in County Durham. Now I think the problem is, what this is symptomatic of is lack of investment in schools and education. Now we had a programme called Building Skills for the Future under the last Labour government. And that was making real changes to the facilities that we were educated in across England and in County Durham. When I went to school in the 1980s and 90s, the skills hadn't changed in 60, 70 years. It's like when I take my children to Beemish today, there wasn't much difference. There's a dramatic change in the facilities that our children were educated in through the Blair government and beyond that. And that stopped in 2010 when Building Skills for the Future was scrapped. And really, you know, that's why we're in a situation like that today. Where we've got classrooms that are too small, classrooms that don't-
and children, especially their family members, attend different schools. People assume that teachers want to wear face masks. I'm a fully qualified teacher of modern foreign languages and mask-wearing when delivering language lessons is absolutely impossible. A huge number of my colleagues would appreciate clear guidance on mask-wearing. And I'd like to turn to the excellent point in the amended motion regarding looking at whether teachers should be given priority status in any future vaccine rollouts. As councillor Bell said, it is extremely well supported by teachers. I think this is a very sensible idea and would very much be welcomed by everyone who works in schools. Previously, the decision has been not to do this and move to allocating vaccinations based on medical need. However, coronavirus has changed and we are now all meant to consider the spread of the virus and the effect of staff absences on families and children. Children have missed such a lot of their education which I loved, which was a shame. I am speaking against the amendment which suggests that opening a window is a quick fix that will solve the problem. I suggest councillors Bell and Henderson have never taught a class of 37-year-olds sitting in their courts and shivering.
Awesome, especially in the middle of winter, personal choice. During this pandemic, a lot of people have made a hell of a lot of money out of this. From pharmaceutical companies to PPE companies, to the point that it's no longer a pandemic, it's a scandemic. And I will not be supporting this amendment. Thank you.
Councillor Joplin?
Thank you very much Chair. I think with this amendment, we are being asked with the original motion, we are being asked to do something that is not practical. The amendment is infinitely practical. There are schools that even putting the equipment that's been asked for would not suffice. I, you know, think back to the amount of time I've been councillor. And I think if we hadn't have spent £50 million on a new county hall, that we didn't want £50 million on a new county hall, this council would have been able to have fulfilled its obligation to the schools. Also, I don't know what the Royal Yacht's got to do actually with this motion. But if we're bringing up the Royal Yacht, the previous Royal Yacht that we had brought £3 billion worth of trade to this country. And also, as we've gone back to 2010, once again, because they can't get over it, they left the coffers empty. That's why the school start being rebuilt. So I'm, you can laugh, but that happens to be the truth. And the only, the only pleasure you get is out of never, never putting your hand up to what you've done. You always blame somebody else.
Councillor McKeon?
Thank you. Before I start, I'd like to call for a name vote. Thank you. I believe we have the requisite numbers there. Just to come back a bit on what councillor Joplin said. Around the world, actually, Labour leader Gordon Brown was credited with shepherding us and the world through that financial crisis. And actually, it's not the Labour Party that's overseen 11 years of stagnant growth. We are now a low-growth, high-tax economy. That explains part of why we have to have discussions on motions like this today. Because quite frankly, the public realm hasn't functioned properly for 11 years. And quite frankly, I'm quite sick of opposite coming forward and diluting our motions with amendments like this. Because quite frankly, this costs us nothing as a council. All we are doing is demanding the absolute best for people in County Durham. Open a window, I'm sorry, I represent a primary school that's in such a windy place. It was the first primary school in the country to get a wind turbine. And you want them to open the windows and that's how our- And that's how our children are going to learn in the cold, with our teachers and teaching assistants and support staff in the cold? Go outside, man! It's Durham in January! And this is what you want? All we're asking you to do is write to the Secretary of State. If that's too much for us to ask for, then, well, under the coalition, there really must be problems in our education department, because we never had that lack of capacity when councillor Gunn was in charge. The science shows that air filtration systems have a real impact, that they are the way forward. So why, why don't we ask for the best for our children and our families and for our schools? We here, we're school governors, we engage with our local schools. When you are voting, and I'm thinking about every person in this room, regardless of whether or not you're part of a coalition or an opposition group, make this vote, because that is a disgrace.
Really, it's just bad taste, it's awful. The fact that you're asking kids to sit and to sit and open a window in the freezing cold, I mean, let's put this way, if you've seen the look, the reports, that life expectancy in Durham have gone down since this Covid pandemic started, that up here, actually, our health services are worse now because of all this and the strain on them. We are asking people to put themselves at risk of getting further illnesses by opening a window. If you give someone cold, flu through that, that's then going to add on to it. Air filtration devices will actually help to improve the atmospheres within schools so that it's healthier and not actually endangering them to such illnesses as flus and colds through cold weather coming through. I'll be voting against this amendment because it's a disgrace.
Councillor Sexton?
It's down to the schools themselves to go on the report and register for a device if they need it. And we've already talked about four billion pound agreement, which is to go out and spend hundreds of millions of pounds. They arrive at schools and they say, well, actually, we don't need them, we've got plenty of ventilation here. Then put a bit more beef around it. It's not about our children sitting in schools freezing cold. It's not about that. It's about ventilation and being practical about where we are with the pandemic now. People are vaccinated in the mean, others aren't, I get that. Nobody knows more than me what coronavirus can do. But basically, we've got to be practical about this. Going out and spending hundreds of millions of pounds and providing stripped equipment that didn't ask for, that didn't want. It's down to the schools to go on and register their interest. Eighty percent of people who have applied have had that fulfilled. Have you actually, in your schools, applied? About her anxiety about her particular classroom, which does a wrong. And I'm not sure if you're saying it, dear, but I'm happy to contribute out of my budget, if that is allowed, to purchase a air purifier for that classroom, if you would like to. Thank you, Chair.
Councillor Hearn?
Thank you, Chair. Um, councillor Sexton's covered everything I wanted to say. It was purely just to say that this actually offers more to schools and teachers than the first motion. Thank you.
Councillor Forbes?
Uh, thank you, Chair. Councillor Forbes with the spending division. I'm going to be very brief. Uh, councillor McCurran says, or she asks if it's too much for the council to write to the Secretary of State. Well, the simple response to that is no, it's not. Hence why the amendment says we're going to write to the Secretary of State for Education. Secondly, she brings up the subject of the economy. I just want to clarify that under this Conservative government, the UK has the fastest-growing economy in the G7. And as other colleagues have said, including councillor Hearn just there, this amendment actually brings more to the table. It considers whether teachers should be given priority status alongside other key workers in the vaccine rollout. Thank you, Chair.
Councillor O'Malley?
Thank you, Chair. Um, yeah, well, likewise, councillor Sexton's said most of what I wanted to say, but I'm very happy to support the amendment, it's a very sensible amendment. Um, surely it makes sense to target the support where it's needed, um, rather than a one-size-fits-all solution. Thank you.
Councillor Keir?
Uh, Chair, I wasn't going to speak at all, but I'll be brief. There's some political points being made that I have to counter. Um, councillor Joplin, the credit crunch of two thousand and eight, was that just something that happened over the people? Do you remember that? Do you remember that? And do you remember how Gordon Brown was lauded the world over for his response to it, how he kept the U- two thousand and ten when the Tory, um, came over? So, um, I'll take it from there, round there. It'll be one or the other, it'll be one or the other. And foster, you never, foster, you never happened. Never happened in your household, did it not? Finally, councillor Sexton, thirty-seven billion, protest and trace, track and trace. Do you remember that? What's that number? Thirty-seven billion pounds and then Jefferson. So don't lecture us on the economy, because you don't know what you're talking about.
Point of order here?
I think it's unacceptable that we're being targeted in actual counties.
Yes, and keep to the script, keep to schools, please. Councillor Monk?
This has been going on for a while, I've forgotten to press the button. Councillor Tinsley, that actually pressed the button, after he said that he wasn't going to speak either. And he mentioned about the past and about things like building schools for the future. And I know that County Durham waited a long time before the county council actually even joined the Building Skills for the Future programme. And the reality is that we've had decades of the previous Labour administration here, top-slicing money that's provided from the government to repair schools as profit of up to twenty percent, and putting it into reserves and then spending it on other things or leaving it there. Many of the windows in schools in this council invested enough into our school buildings. We're asking for an awful lot more than the original motion. So I would suggest that what we're doing here is adding to what councillor Gunn's motion says and put into government, we want an awful lot more than what councillor Gunn's motion is saying. Thank you, Chair.
Councillor Kelly?
Thank you, Chair. It's question really for Deputy Monitoring Officer. Is section C not a separate motion and not an amendment? It's talking about the vaccine, whereas the substance of the motion, the original one, is about ventilation and air and nothing to do with vaccination. I think one or two members of the office have already pointed it out, but I would like to say this is a separate motion and not an amendment.
Uh, Chair, if I could just advise the meeting through you that, um, the amendment is being checked again. It opts to leave words out and add words in and does not negate the thrust of the original motion. So I can assure councillor Kelly that it's a perfectly valid amendment. Thank you, Chair.
Councillor Gunn, you have the right to reply before we go to the board? Just before you do, councillor Gunn, a point of order? Sorry? You're not ready, Justin? Okay, well, I do speak, then we'll go to councillor Callan.
Yeah, councillor McLean, on division. Yeah, I will be supporting this amendment. Where quick fixes to improve ventilation are not possible. I think that's a bit of an insult, that. Uh, what I want to do is, I've just been looking through Ainskill's website. Uh, Ainskill, Boris Johnson went there, Richard Bell's colleague. Ainskill states in there, um, on their website, each classroom has its own portable air purifier. If Ainskill can have its own portable air purifier, why can't my kids have their own portable air purifier in the classroom? I'll be voting against this.
Councillor Gunn?
Uh, thank you, Chair, and thank councillor Bell for this amendment. But I have to say that I think this is the worst Tory coalition amendment I've ever seen put in all of the Labour motions we brought to this council. It's an amendment that's like slapping an elastoclast on a major wound. It's pathetic in the way in which it dilutes what is a very serious issue around having proper ventilation in our classrooms, in all of our schools in this county. It seriously dismisses protecting our children and our staff. And it flies in the face of all of the things that some of the old councillors over on that side here have said about their commitment. It flies in the face of it, because it doesn't actually say anything except quick fixes, improving, where quick fixes can improve ventilation. There are so many speakers on this side of this room who have made really, really good contributions to this debate. I just, I just answer councillor Joplin, because there were several speakers who, frankly, I just thought, ah, this contributes nothing to the debate. But, but that was, I think you said, councillor Joplin, it's not practical, but you didn't actually say why it wasn't practical. Well, I think it's probably a lot more practical than what's already been mentioned by my colleague, than test and trace, the costing of which was thirty-seven billion. An eye-watering staggering investment of taxpayers' money, which failed. This is not going to fail our children. This is going to improve their opportunities to attend school and to be healthy.
One minute, member.
That's what this is about, Chair. And I really, truly hope that every councillor in this room will show their commitment to our teachers and to our children and to their families by voting for this motion without this amendment. This amendment is absolutely pathetic. Thank you, Chair.
Ben, members, thank you. We'll go to the board, I'll pass over to Alan.
Thank you, Chair. So we'll now take a vote on the amendment as moved by councillor Bell. Uh, one to vote for the amendment, two to vote against the amendment, and three to abstain. And the voting's on. Yes, apologies, councillor, that, that will be factored in. So yes, it is a named vote. We'll look at- Is councillor Vardy in the room still?
The vote is now on, members. Ben, members, for the motion for amendment forty-eight against fifty-two, abstentions one, the amendment is rejected. Councillor Joplin? No? No members ready. Councillor Gunn, you have the right to reply again.
Hi, which, uh, I don't know. You mean? Yes, thank you. I don't want to add to the time, I want to thank all of the speakers actually who contributed to the debate. And I particularly obviously want to thank those who rejected this amendment. It's the right thing to do, to protect our children and our staff and our communities as well. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Go on to the board, members. Councillor Wilder, a point of order?
Could I just see clarity that we've already extended standing orders for the length of the meeting? Because it's now gone past half past twelve and the vote won't be legitimate. Chair, the two-and-a-half-hour limit is not a hard-edged limit. So once the two-and-a-half hour, two-and-a-half hour limit is reached, you conclude the debate on the item in question. And then every other item after that, there aren't any other items after that today, are moved and seconded without discussion. So you still go through every item that remains to be on the agenda. So as, as we were in this debate, when the clock reached two-and-a-half hours, we continue with the debate until it's concluded. Can you wait? A point of order, is it?
Yes, it is a point of order, that's exactly what it is, Chair. Hello, uh, Chair, in standing orders, is it possible to vote for an amendment that does then become a substantive motion if you didn't vote on the amendment? I.e., perhaps you left the room before the toilet or something like that?
Yes. Any member that's in the room at the time is entitled to vote on any motion that is before the council at that time.
So we go to them. A point of order, is it, Ben, member?
Yeah, and I was to them before. Um, I just want to ask for a name vote on this vote, please.
A name vote? Okay, it's a name vote. Can we go to the vote, please? I'll pass over to the legal officer.
Thank you, Chair. Uh, it's, we're now voting on the substantive motion as set out in the agenda by councillor Gunn. Uh, one to vote for that motion, two to vote against that motion, three to abstain, and like the amendment, this is a recorded vote. Thank you. And the vote is over.
Members, the vote is closed. Members, the vote is as follows. Four seventy-eight against eight, abstentions sixteen. The motion is carried. Members, that brings us to item number fifteen, questions from members. No questions have been submitted for today's meeting. So, members, that concludes today's business. Before the meeting finishes, I would like to thank everyone for taking part and those members of the public and media who have watched this meeting. Thank you for your attendance. The hall is now going to be emptied one room at a time. You will be asked to exit the hall in a safe and considered way. It might be helpful if you could please leave your handset and registration card on your table. These will be collected button once everyone has vacated the hall. Once again, thank you for your attendance, members.